All right, it is seven o'clock, so I think we can go ahead and get started. Yeah, I could gavel, but I think that everyone will move on. So Evelyn, if you could do a roll call.
Trustee Lee.
Present.
Trustee King.
Trustee Marcus.
Here.
Vice President Weekly.
Present.
President Wong.
Here. Oh, I need to report on closed session. So, report on closed session from January 10th. Information was given about negotiations for this school year and the next school year, but no action was taken. And now we'll move on to the welcome. So, good evening and welcome to the January 15th, 2025 meeting of the Redwood City School District Governing Board. Buenos noches, bienvenidos. Si ver quieren interpretación al español, por favor llama al nueve siete ocho nueve nueve cero cinco uno tres siete y presionen ocho tres siete siete cero cuatro uno y el signo de numero. Si asiste a la reunión en persona, solicita un transmisor situado al fondo de la sala. Again, welcome. All members of the public are partners in education, so the board encourages you to participate and provide comments, and it looks like people are taking us up on that, on issues of concern regardless of whether they're on the agenda. To speak, I know people have figured this out, but just as a reminder, you can complete a speaker's card online, or if you're here in person, you'll find cards available at the entrance to complete and then hand them to Evelyn, two people down from me. If you're addressing a subject listed on the agenda, you'll be called at the time that the item's being considered, but if the issue's not on the agenda, you'll be called shortly during the oral communications agenda item. And then, to be fair to all speakers, we do limit the public comment time. It's usually three minutes, but it depends upon the number of speakers, and we'll do that as we get through it. All right, let's move on to changes to the agenda. There's one to pull. Yeah.
Right, I'm recommending to pull 8.5, the approval of 2024 school accountability report cards. There is some information that was brought to our attention that is incorrect, and a lot of this information that are placed onto the SARC are uploaded from CalPads, and so I think there, we not only think we know there are errors, and thank you, Trustee King, for noting those for us.
Okay, pulling 8.5. And then I wanted to suggest that we move 11.2, which is the presentation on the mathematics curriculum, up to the school report. So, put it after 6.1, which is the Orion presentation, and before our public hearing on connects renewal at 7.1. Work for everyone? Okay, any other changes? None, I need a motion second.
I'll make a motion to change agenda.
Okay. All right, all in favor? Aye, okay, great. Moving on, oral communication, I don't think we have anyone for oral communication spot. Yeah, okay. Then, we'll jump right into our school and community reports. We're going to start with Orion Alternative School presentation for the 2425 school year. And we'll begin with Ms. Wong. So Winnie, you, it's all yours.
Good, and I'm so glad I get to get started, and I saw a lot of perspective and my family here, and they told me that some of my families are online as well watching, and my staff are online as well, so hi, I'm here doing it solo tonight, and it's my time to shine. Right? Okay, so, good evening, Board of Trustees, Cabinet members and community members. Tonight, I'm honored to be here to present a comprehensive overview of Orion's academic achievement, enriching programs, diverse school events, and key initiative designed to foster continued growth and success at Orion School. So, we'll get started with goal one. Goal one focuses on supporting our students' social-emotional learning need, improving attendance, and reducing behavior and suspension rate. When we look at the absenteeism rate at Orion School across four school years, a significant improvement was seen in 2023-24 school year with absenteeism dropping to 12.9% and further declining to 12.1% as of December 20th in the 2024-25 school year. This indicates steady progress in reducing chronic absenteeism over time. Next slide, please. This slide highlights trends in absenteeism across various subgroups over four school years. Subgroups like English learners, socio-economically disadvantaged students, and students with disabilities consistently show higher absenteeism rate, even though these rates have declined in the most recent years. A subgroup of students facing home challenges has shown a clear increase in absenteeism, reaching 40% as of December 2024. This highlights an area where additional targeted support can help improve attendance and overall well-being. Our suspension rate is trending down to 0% starting in 2023-24 school year, and that is carried forward into this school year. While we cannot capture all the effective strategies we have implemented in just one slide, I would like to highlight the key initiative we have rolled out both last school year and this school year, and talking about their impact. At Orion, we recognize that the developmental need of young children can vary significantly. We have four TK at Orion and four kindergarten classrooms. To support our TK and kindergarten students, we have created a dedicated outdoor learning space this school year, designed specifically to meet their need. When designing this space, we have several priorities in mind to ensure it would be developmentally appropriate for our youngest learner on campus. First, we work to offer students a variety of choices for play, ensuring they have developmentally appropriate options to explore. Second, we focus on smaller group play. While our playground, our new playground, amazing, can accommodate over 100 students, we intentionally limit groups to 50 or fewer to create a safer or more manageable outdoor environment for the students. Finally, we allocated additional supervision and our amazing parent volunteer during TK and kindergarten recess to guide and support students during their play. You can see some cute pictures here. Here are some examples of activities in this outdoor learning space, including sensory play with our sand and water table, walking cups, large building blocks, and dramatic play. We continue to add or rotate other activities to keep students engaged. We have seen great success with this initiative. We have had only two TK and kindergarten behavior referrals so far this school year, down from 26 last school year. Given this success, we have expanded the outdoor learning initiative to our first to fifth grade student and the student in the SLC classroom during their lunch recess and morning recess. Now, students have access to different kind of play options, including lunch bunch, garden club new this year, and PE coach facilitated soccer game, which began last year. As a result, we have seen a reduction in playground behavior referral with only five so far this school year. In addition, with support from our mental health counselor, Ms. Diane, we have launched the Peacemaker Program where third to fifth grade students facilitate restorative chat for peer involved in playground conflicts. This program encourages student leadership and helps develop conflict resolution skills. We have continued our attendance initiative to promote daily attendance for all of our students. We ensure that families of absent students receive regular communication from our office staff and our MTSS TOSA. Families of students who are chronically absent or at risk of becoming chronically absent are invited to attend the school engagement support plan meeting with our MTSS TOSA and administrators. To further emphasize the importance of attendance, school administration and classroom teacher have made a very special effort to communicate policies on when to keep students home, how to apply for independent study, and how to report absences during our back-to-school night and principal's coffee, we repeated for many times. This provided families with the opportunity to better understand our attendance policy and expectations. Next slide, please. At Orion, we believe in fostering strong family and student engagement. Our school-wide events such as Author Illustrators Fair, Mid-Autumn Harvest Festival, Nuna New Year Field Day, and multicultural study, there are many more here, I can give a full speech for all the event, and to promote a sense of community and belonging for our students and their family. And I want to extend a special invitation to all the board member and cabinet member here to join us to celebrate the Nuna New Year during the last week of January. Okay, now moving on to goal two. Supporting our multilingual learners is another critical priority at Orion School. By 2027, we aim to increase the reclassification rate to 20% and decrease long-term English learners to 10%. The table below provide information on Orion's RFAP and long-term English learner rates over two school year. In the 2022-23 school year, 7% of multilingual students were reclassified as fluent English proficient compared to 6% in 2023-24 school year. While this reflects a slight decrease in RFAP percentage, it's important to note that the total number of multilingual students was higher in 2023 to 24 school year than in 2022 to 2023, which impacted the overall percentage despite continued progress in reclassification. Our remote, we looked, we did dive into enrollment data, and our enrollment data shows that an increasing number of multilingual families are enrolling their children at Orion School starting in TK, which currently has four classes. Many of the young students are in the early stage of English language development and are not yet eligible for reclassification. However, with strong support from our teachers, they have made significant progress, advancing to the next ALPAC proficiency level shown in the next slide. Additionally, I want to point out, some of our students are also learning an additional language such as Mandarin, starting in TK, which can extend a timeline for achieving proficiency in English. Now, let's take a closer look at the incredible progress we have made over the past three years in supporting our students' English language development at Orion. Back in 2021-22 school year, only 6.9% of the student in all grades increased by at least one ALPAC level. Fast forward to 22-23 school year, we saw a remarkable jump to 26.8%, but we didn't stop there. In 2023 to 2024, the number soared even higher with 44.4% of the student in all grade achieving this milestone. If you look at the cohort data, you might see a big increase in the percentage of second grade student who moved up at least one ALPAC level. However, there was a drop in third grade mainly because the ALPAC test format changed. For third grade student, it was their first time taking standardized tests on the computer, so the test switched from one-on-one testing to whole-group computer-based format, which was a new experience for our third grade students. Even with this drop, other grade levels showed strong progress overall, highlighting the success of our strategies and ELD support. These exciting achievements are the result of the collaborative effort of Orion staff in implementing the following initiative. Next slide, please. In addition to several effective strategies applied through a cohesive model across the school district, such as adopting language power curriculum and using district integrated unit strategies like inquiry chart, joint label, chance, vocabulary bank, sentence frame, and more, Orion has introduced specific action as part of our own site action plan. I want to highlight one key initiative, designated ELD instruction during our WIN block. WIN stands for What I Need. This school year, we successfully rolled out the WIN block program at Orion, recognizing that multilingual students are present in all classroom in both MI and co-op program. Our TK to kindergarten, TK to fifth grade staff collaborated to analyze students' ALPAC assessment data. This allowed us to group students across program based on their English language proficiency level to provide targeted support tailored to their need. At Orion, we also place a strong emphasis on building partnership with families. Our family come from diverse cultural background and speak different home languages. Families play a very important role in their children's language development, and we value their partnership and involvement in the learning process. To support this, we offer a variety of parent education programs, including Project Cornerstone Parent Education Workshop in Spanish, Parent-led Early Literacy Parent Education Workshop, we have one of the leader here, Megan, Mandarin Literacy Parent Education Workshop as well to support our family. These programs aim to connect home and school by providing family with simple and practical tools to support their multilingual children. Many of these workshops are even parent-led in creating a space for family to share valuable experiences and insight with one another. All right, moving on to goal three. Goal three focuses on our students' progress in ELA and MATH as measured by the I Ready and CAFS assessment. We are excited to see a 0.2% increase in the percentage of Orion student who met or exceeded smarter balanced ELA performance from 2022 to 2023, and a 0.7% increase from 2023 to 2024. This marks three consecutive years of growth, maintaining an average of 52 to 53% of our student meeting or exceeding smarter balanced ELA performance. When we dive deeper into our data, we notice that a few subgroup that are scoring below our school average. Meanwhile, we have three subgroup that are scoring far above our school average. Therefore, we have very intentional plan to provide the targeted support and extension to meet all the students' learning need. I'll share them in the last slide. According to the I Ready reading data, overall, we are trending on target in the fall as our students continue to make steady growth the past three years. We have 25% of our students who are below grade level, 24% of our students who are approaching grade level, and 51% of our students who are at or above grade level. As we look ahead to spring, given the intentional support and targeted support that we provide for our student, we expect to see some changes in this number, with a decrease in the percentage of students who are approaching or below grade level. In math, we have seen a 4.2% increase from 2022 to 2023 after the new math program adoption. However, we did experience a 2.6% decrease in the number of students who met or exceeded grade level expectation on the smarter balanced math assessment from 2023 to 2024. Our teachers are becoming more comfortable with the new illustrated math curriculum, and we have noticed its strength in engaging students by encouraging them to explore different strategies of solving complex problems. That said, we have identified a need to focus on helping students build their math fluency. To support this, we are using the district math support tools like Reflex and FRX to help students strengthen their math fluency and fact. We also see that we have a few subgroups here that are scoring below our school average. Meanwhile, we have three subgroups that are scoring far above our school average. Our four I Ready math data shows a 2% decrease in the number of students performing below grade level this year, while the percentage of students who are at or above grade level continue to steadily increase over three years. This is a very positive trend, and it's something we're excited to celebrate. To address these data that we just reviewed, I want to highlight several district initiative and Orion-specific initiative we have implemented to provide targeted and intentional support for all of the Orion students. These initiatives are designed to meet all Orion students' learning need, and I'm really excited to share them in details. Our first initiative focuses on the district's professional learning communities, PLCs. Teacher participate in structured six-to-eight week inquiry cycle in all subjects. During these cycles, grade level team analyzes assessment data and identifies specific goal and brainstorm strategy to provide targeted support and small group instruction for students. At Orion, you will see differentiated instruction consistently implemented across all grade level and classrooms. At the end of each cycle, the team meet again to review the student progress and determine the next step. If student have met their goal, the team select a new goal and begin another round of planned-do-study act cycle. If not, the team reflect on the challenges and plan for the next step to support student growth. Throughout these cycles, our reading specialists, administrators, MTSS TOSA provide additional guidance and resources, ensuring that every team has the resources and expertise needed to succeed. Our second initiative centers on enhancing instructional strategy. In addition to implementing district-aligned effective teaching strategies, Orion has introduced three new site-specific initiative this school year. Grade 1 to 5 WIN block, grade 3 to 5 Pedagogy of Confidence, and kindergarten to fifth grade learning without fear structure handwriting instruction. The first of this is the grade 1 to 5 WIN blocking initiative, again, WIN stands for What I Need. This idea was inspired by the Henry Ford principal Jennifer, successful implementation of intervention support during their WIN block time. Based on our assessment data, we identify a diverse range of student need. Some students require intensive intervention, while more than 50% of the student benefit from extension activity and additional practice to move from approaching grade level to meeting or exceeding grade level expectations. To address these need, all TK classroom teacher, reading specialist, both our Mandarin and English reading specialist, our MTSS TOSA librarian Christina, RSP teachers, DMTOSA, and administration collaborated to group students based on their individual learning need, and then the targeted support include both intervention and extension opportunity for all the student. For grade 1 and 2, student receives support and extension within their grade level band. For grade 3 to 5, we have taken an innovative approach, grouping students into 14 multi-age groups. These groups focus on accelerated reading, math extension, math intervention, additional math practice, writing, vocabulary, English reading intervention, English language art, English language development, and study skills, all tailored to what each student need most. This initiative reflects the extraordinary teamwork and dedication of all the Orion staff. Their collaboration and commitment have brought the WIN block to life, offering all students three sessions per week, each lasting 40 minutes, and I'm really excited, we are about to launch the second round of the WIN block next week. So, I'm not taking any meeting on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday from 2:00 to 2:40. And at Orion, we are proud to have a rich coaching culture that emphasizes ongoing instructional coaching and professional development for our teachers. Since last school year, our grade 3 to 5 teachers have worked with Mrs. Lamb, Mrs. Regina Lamb, our Pedagogy of Confidence site coach, also is our third grade teacher, and Whitney Ekin, our district staff development team coach, to implement thinking map that enhance reading comprehension and writing skill. This year, Mrs. Lamb continued guiding teachers to expand the use of these tools, focusing on organization, purpose, evidence, and elaboration as identified in the CAFS writing assessment data. Recognizing the heightened expectation for citing nonfiction text evidence in informational opinion and narrative writing, teachers are enhancing instruction using new seller resources and refined prompts. Through collaboration and ongoing data analysis, they are implementing targeted strategies to support student growth in writing. And this school year, our VP, Brianna, and she's also our English curriculum TOSA, introduced the Learning Without Fear Handwriting Curriculum at Orion to address a key aspect of early literacy that support overall academic success. Handwriting is more than just a motor skill. It plays a critical role in reading and writing development. Research shows that when students learn to write by hand, they engage multiple areas of the brain, which help reinforce letter recognition, spelling, and reading fluency. Our teacher received professional development to deliver explicit multisensory handwriting instruction aligned with the science of reading. The program focuses on printing for grade K to 2 and cursive writing for grade 3 to 5. Now, let's shift our focus to how we can support our teachers in effectively implementing these instructional strategies, as I mentioned before. At Orion, we strongly believe in the importance of professional development and instructional coaching. In addition to the district-led professional development by Anna, we have a dedicated team providing consistent coaching support on-site for all of the teacher. This team include ProU, our bilingual program consultant, Alva Wu, and myself, our in-house chain Mandarin immersion instructional coach, the district staff development team, our VP, Brianna, she is also an early literacy instructional coach, our in-house chain Pedagogy of Confidence coach, Regina, and also the MTSS TOSA mayor belle. This team is committed to ensuring that every Orion teacher has the resources and guidance needed to succeed. Our approach to coaching and professional development is both collaborative and individualized, ensuring that teachers receive tailored support that align with their unique teaching style and need. We take pride in developing our own in-house instructional coach, including Alva, Regina, and the coaches in the induction program at our school site. The commitment to developing teacher leaders within our community fosters a culture where teachers feel inspired to share their knowledge and skills with one another. As a result, we nurture new instructional coaches, building a sustainable, peer-driven support system that empower our teacher to continuously grow and collaborate. Thank you, Dr. Baker, for your incredible support and investment in providing a guest teacher at all the school site. Our guest teacher has a really packed schedule, allowing teachers to participate in professional development, instructional coaching with our onsite coaches and their grade level team, lesson planning, data analysis, and peer observation. At the conclusion of my presentation tonight, I want to express my gratitude for my superstar Orion teachers and staff. The progress that we have made in fostering academic success, social-emotional well-being, and multilingual proficiency is a direct result of your hard work and dedication. As we move forward, we'll continue to refine and expand our initiative to meet all of our students' learning need, and thank you for believing in the vision we share for Orion School. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Winnie, and thank you to your entire staff for the work that you do at Orion. Before we move into board discussion and questions, we do have two speakers that want to speak about Mandarin, the Mandarin immersion program at Orion, so our first speaker, and then Winnie, if you could just step aside and they'll come up, would be, I think it says Hai Qing Yang. Yeah, great.
Hi, everyone. Good evening, board members. My name-
Before you start, just so you know, you have three minutes, there's a timer running there. I know I just took a couple seconds of it, Rick paused it, so we'll start it over, but okay, great.
Okay. Good evening, board members. My name is Hai Qing Yang, and I moved to Redwood City with my husband in 2019. We have a toddler who will qualify for TK this year. As a family with Chinese and Taiwanese heritage, we were especially excited about the Mandarin immersion program at Orion, which provides an incredible opportunity for children to connect with their cultural roots and gain valuable global skills. This year, as we apply for the 2025-2026 TK applications for our toddler, we found the process to be incredibly stressful. The lottery system adds significant uncertainty for families who are deeply committed to Mandarin immersion for the long term. Additionally, the process feels opaque. Families with little information have little information about the number of applicants, waitlist numbers, and chances of securing a spot, which only adds to the anxiety. I also understand that TK class sizes are also reduced from 24 to 20 students a class. This is concerning, given that there's a statewide TK rollout and expansion. This has created anxiety for families like my own who are eager to join the Mandarin immersion program but feel like chances of getting in are dwindling. I understand that the school board is under many constraints. If possible, I would like the board to consider the following. One, please consider ways to prioritize families who are dedicated to Mandarin immersion for the long term, whether it's supplemental application for prospective or waitlisted families to demonstrate their commitment. Two, please consider exploring creative solutions to accommodate more families on existing campus, whether it's combining classes on existing campus. Mandarin is not just a connection to heritage for families like mine, but also a powerful global skills for all students. Expanding this program benefits our community as a whole. I hope we can find solutions that can ensure every interested child in Redwood City has access to this exceptional program. Thank you. has access to this exceptional program. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing your excitement about the program. One thing I will add is that that reduction in TK is, that's state law, right? Like, that's not, the universal TK rollout is requiring the reduction there. Yeah, I hear you. Okay, our next speaker is Michelle. I'm going to get your last name wrong. I'm sorry, Michelle Strobe.
I have a difficult last name. You can call me whatever. It's, everybody calls me something different, so it's fine. Good evening, board members. My name is Michelle Strobe. I'm a mom of a prospective kindergartner for Orion MI for this upcoming school year. Thank you for allowing me time again to speak tonight. Over the last few weeks, I have had a crash course in public education and advocacy, and I wanted to start by saying how appreciative I am of all of you, all the hard work you do, the school board members, our dedicated principals, the administrators, teachers, and aides. You do all of the things here to make our kids' lives better, and I appreciate it, so thank you. I know firsthand that those of us in helping professions are in it for love and betterment of our community. We're not in it for fame and fortune, so really huge thank you to all of you for that. I also really want to emphasize how hopeful I am for the expansion of the Orion MI program to keep up with community interest and demand, as can be seen by the community letters we shared and the number of people here today and also last week speaking for growth of the program. Having two bilingual programs in the Redwood City School District allows us the unique opportunity to capture the growing interest in public bilingual education. These programs can serve as a magnet for community growth and engagement. Moreover, by expanding the Orion MI program, we will ensure that students of all socioeconomic statuses and backgrounds and cultures have access to quality public education regardless of where they live. This inclusivity, in my opinion, is a fundamental cornerstone of the public education system, providing opportunities and advancement for children of all backgrounds. Today, we're here to discuss the upcoming twenty-five, twenty-six school years, particularly. That's what I'm here to discuss. However, I genuinely believe that without the ability to extend this program, the challenges we're seeing, the increases in waitlists, the increase in MI interest, won't go away. Captured in our community letters that we have shared with you and previously last week, and also the speakers here today and parents of the current school year, they're already, we already shared with you, I'm sorry, parents for this current school year, but also those looking forward to school year twenty-six, twenty-seven, and beyond. I appreciate your time and dedication to our children's future and for the continued support from the board and allowing this discussion to continue. Thank you so much for your time.
Thanks, Michelle, again, for speaking about your interest and passion for the program. I think we can return back to the presentation for Orion, and now we can open it up to board member questions or comments. Anyone can start.
In the interest of not forcing David Lee to go first on absolutely everything, the other, David, I'll take it. So first point of feedback is actually more for the district and Jenny, and this is going to be common feedback from the other presentations, just from a data perspective. Really would love to see cohort analyses, so just seeing the progress of student advancement, because when we do year-by-year snapshot of, you know, above level, at level, below level, et cetera, that there are confounding variables that get thrown in there, you know, like the students who left, new students who came, et cetera. What we really care about is the progress that the students make at every school in the district. The numbers look good, so this is not like, you know, taking a stern eye to it. But really, we do want to ground ourselves in our students' learning at a good pace. I also feel like we don't need to over-index on like sub-percent wins or gains, because like a lot of that's just going to be in the statistical noise. So small numbers are going to go up, small numbers are going to go down, and that's not really telling of a trend. I love the win blocks that were rolled out this year. It's fantastic. Just for people who aren't aware, I do have two kids at Orion in the MI program, and they are loving it. So I think that was a really cool thing to go roll out.
I'm loving it too, because it's like, yay, back to the teaching time, and our teacher got to choose their favorite subject to teach, so everybody's having fun together.
That's fantastic. Handwriting is kind of funny, because this was actually my absolute least favorite class when I was in elementary school. So like, my druthers would be like, well, why do we need to teach the kids cursive? They can type. We have got keyboards now. But the data is actually crystal clear, that handwriting's got a real strong link to literacy and academic performance. I guess I did okay, even though my handwriting is terrible. But the data is really clear, so I think it's a good example of the district following best practices in pedagogy. So I just want to applaud that. I think that's really great, despite the fact that I hate handwriting. I think you're doing the right thing, nonetheless. Cool. And I love the focus on professional development for the teachers. Peer observation in particular is something that we've heard is really valued by them, is a great way to level up. I wonder about the possibility, and I've mentioned this in other presentations, for peer teaching opportunities in the classroom, kid to kid, especially with the data that so clearly indicates that we've got some very advanced learners in the classroom, and we've got some students who could really use some extra instruction if we could find ways to go and pair that. That also is a proven technique from pedagogy that's applicable even in elementary school. So I think it's something that we should be looking into. Thank you so much for all you do for the school. I hear all sorts of wonderful things from the parents, and I get to experience it myself as a parent of students in your school, so thank you for all you do.
Right. I'm so glad to hear that your children really enjoy the experience at Orion, and I heard the love from our family here.
Go next. Thank you again for the presentation, for your leadership, and of course, thank you to all your staff for the commitment to serve the students and obviously their success. And of course, I love that you took the idea from Jen and did the win block. So that's actually really great, because I know that we've talked as board members, how you could mimic either someone else's, whatever they're doing. So, you know, it's good to know that you guys are actually collaborating and actually getting ideas from somebody to make your school better, so thank you so much.
Yeah, that's what we did at our ME meeting, because Dr. Baker and Anna now allocated additional time for principal with like great practices to be shared with all other principals, so we can learn from each other. And we have the educational run as well, so I get opportunity to ask our cabinet member like any great things, like how to solve this problem. Do you have any great examples? So we have really wonderful cohort of principal who are willing to go way and beyond to share resources and best practices with each other.
Thank you. I think that was it for me. Obviously, the numbers look good and progress is good. I've said it for other presentations as well, so again, thank you so much for everything you do.
Thank you.
Principal Winnie, thank you very much for the presentation. I also have a child at Orion, and also he's enjoying the win block, so I think that's a great add this year. And I noticed, I just had one question, and really it was more about whether we can provide support. You mentioned that the third graders kind of had a dip in the LPAC because of the having to use the computer. Is that something that was mandated, or we just don't have the resources to do the individual testing?
So it is mandated. All the third, fourth, fifth grade students, they would take the standardized assessments such as LPAC and a smart balance, ELA, and math assessment all on a computer. So there's a lot to navigate, and you can only listen to the audio once. When they didn't pay attention, I'm like, we need to wake up. We need to listen, just because it's not going to replay again. It's not like you're with the tester. The tester can repeat. So that's some like test skills that our teachers are training our students on improving.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, quick follow-up on that, just from my own understanding. The switch to the computer, is that something that happens every year? As in, we should expect to see kind of this drop every year in third grade? Or is that specifically last year that was the switch?
So the LPAC test is all computerized, actually even from kindergarten. The difference is the kindergarten to second grade, you actually have someone is with you doing the tests with you one-on-one. The students are still, in second grade, they're still using it, they're still doing some of it, but it's with an adult. It's a one-to-one test. Where it happens in third grade, we have to regroup students. So we have a limit of twenty per class we can test at one time in one classroom. So if we go twenty-five, we have to have two people in there, because it's all about monitoring students' progress. So there's the three, the four domains. Speaking and listening is done by our testers and some of our staff, which is a one-to-one. And then we have the listening, which Winnie was talking about, where you get to hear the story once, and then they have to respond to the questions by memory. And, you know, it's a reading test, so they have to be able to read. And then there's the reading assessment, and then the third. So each span, kindergarten first, the test changes in K one, two every year. And then, and then the third grade, this test changes once again, third, fourth, and fifth. So it gets more rigorous, and then it changes against middle school, and then it changes again in high school. So as they're growing up, it's pretty much mimics the S-Back State Test by the time we're done in third grade. But it is computerized, and the kids have to do it all themselves by now.
So in very short, and please correct me if I'm wrong, unless the way which we administer changes, we would expect to see a similar sort of drop among every cohort at that point because of the way.
Yeah, it is a change of an assessment, and they're required to do more reading and more writing from second to third grade.
Correct. Okay, super helpful. Thank you. Sorry, I should have, that was a follow-up, and then I want to also say thank you for the presentation, all the work. I mean, obviously, we have a number of folks, both today and last meeting, who demonstrate support. So clearly, lots of good work is happening. So, yeah, kudos, commend you guys on that, and really appreciate it. I do have a few questions, I think some of which are on the data, and some are more broad things that I think are going to become thematic throughout these meetings. The first one is on the data for the chronic absenteeism. The one thing I noted that looked a little bit abnormal was the spike in the homeless population. So I wanted to see if you wanted to share any insights about that or causes.
And I think the district registration is doing really well in capturing the updated data for students who have housing challenges, like either who are homeless or who are like living in a really crowded space, like what we call like double up. So the registration is doing really great job. So now we have captured the student, the really special group, and we need to provide more targeted support and also make connection with, to keep them updated. So we do notice that, and I'm working with our MTSS TOSA and our office staff in reaching out to the family, checking in with family, we request meeting, like one-on-one meeting with family to ask like anything we can do to help you. Like, are you experiencing any difficulty that we are not aware of? Because we want to show empathy, and we want to be here to help you.
Yeah, so the spike is not because it is in a larger issue than before. It's that we're actually just capturing better data on the homeless populations at this point. It sounds like at the school, you guys are taking a targeted approach to better understand and be more practical there. Okay, that's super helpful.
So David, just for that in context, we went from one seventy-nine to four hundred and sixty-two as a district.
Okay.
Okay, so that's the context.
Yep. No, that's super helpful. Yeah, forty percent, it all kind of depends a little bit on the end. Forty percent is relatively high for any such population, but totally understood that we're just, you know, we're just discovering this in some ways, so I understand. Other, the other two questions are really kind of the standard. And just to provide the context, I think it's just, I think it's helpful to hear from schools and to have it publicly available, both the big strengths and the challenges that schools are facing, especially in a district where we operate in finite resources. So for me, it's very helpful to understand what are the particular areas that have been super helpful for you to make sure that within each of the schools were, you know, the district supporting appropriately. And then when there are challenges, same thing, like we want to know what those are, and if we can do something about it, that's always helpful for me to get to sense from the whole district. That's it. First question just broadly is, would love to hear about which strategy support you believe contributes most to the success that you've seen in your school.
I would say onsite coaching, because a lot, all the teachers in our school district attend a professional development, learning about a new evidence research-based effective teaching strategies in a professional development. However, the follow-up part is also very important, and we are really lucky that we have a Mandarin immersion TOSA teacher on special assignment, funded by Redwood City Mandarin immersion scholar, and we have an outside bilingual Mandarin consultant funded by Dr. Baker, and we also have our MTSS TOSA and our in-house trained Pedagogy of Confidence coach. So they're meeting with the teacher either weekly or bi-weekly to follow up and then to look into their data and review students' work sample, provide co-teaching opportunity or like demo teaching for the teacher, so the teacher can see the strategies in action. Because everyone's classroom is very different, and teachers have different style. The students have different need. But how we can apply what we have learned in the professional development into our practical teaching, so that really require a lot of onsite instructional coaching support.
So professional development and coaching on the instructional side.
Yeah, and we have the guest teacher, again, really wonderful. So because teachers have a really busy schedule, but we do need to sit down to reflect on our practices. We need to be targeted and effective instead of just teaching for a long time. And but we need to, like, we really want to see the good result, and if it's not working, we need to sit down as a team to discuss. So the guest teacher also is very helpful.
Super helpful. And then the flip side, challenges or ways that.
Yeah, funding to continue to recruit like this talent to support our teachers onsite. And I know that like we have been through the budget cut this school year, and we are able to use the site funding to fund a point-five reading specialist and also a point-five MTSS TOSA. We are lucky that we got RCMIS support to fund a full-time MI specific TOSA to support the teacher and provide the coaching and intervention. But all of these specialists are really important, but our budget is also really tight. So I feel really grateful and lucky that I have a really supportive community. But this is also something that is like kind of advantage that we have at our site to have, to continue to have funding and support to have these specialists working with our teacher, because they need to be sustainable, and we want to really grow our in-house trained instructional coach to provide the instructional support for the next group of teacher.
Super consistent. Well, that's all. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I don't want to take up too much more time, and everybody else covered a lot of things, but thank you, Winnie, for the presentation. One thing I did want to note was, thanks for, you know, calling out the discrepancies between the student subgroups and putting together an intentional plan to help kind of address that. I think having those targeted plans to help the different subgroups and sort of bring a little bit more equity there is a great thing to do, so I appreciate your calling out of that. And then again, I think that David's both said it, the focus on coaching and PD, that was just, that's awesome to hear about, really exciting stuff going on there. Pass it off to Dr. Baker.
Thank you.
Winnie, I know you started out with this as a teacher, became an administrator, did your work to get that administrative credential, and worked very closely with Catherine Rivera. This weekend, I had the opportunity to take a friend's class, who's a professor at USF. And she teaches students who want to become administrators. And what would be, and they want to know what is the requirement that a superintendent has for a principal? And she serves a lot of these qualities and criteria that one looks for. But your strengths in your instructional leadership, the expertise that you have in curriculum and pedagogy, takes you a long way. Not only is it in Mandarin, but also in English and the curriculum that we have, and you've taken what the district has provided and moved it along within the time span that you have been a site administrator on your own, without, you know, Catherine being there or anyone else. So I commend you for that. The other piece that is really instrumental in what you have a knack is for the ability to evaluate and improve teaching practices and then follow through with your staff on how to bring those strategies to fruition and make sure that they're happening at your school site. And the piece that you put together with the TK, the Kinder, and the SLC class, that outdoor classroom is amazing. I want to applaud you in that and also your staff. It's phenomenal. You need to bring that up, you know, to your colleagues, so they can see what that looks like and have them come visit it, because everybody at this point in time is going through the facilities master plan, and here's something that, you know, they should consider. I know some do have an outside classroom, but it has not been developed in the fashion that you have it, and it would be, I think, something that would really benefit all children in the district if something like that were available. And then you have people that have the experience of what they're doing with students, so I applaud you. Thank you so much for your hard work.
Thank you, Dr. Baker.
For your hard work and always coming up with, you know, things that you want to make students appreciation for learning and the appreciation for the love of learning to continue at your school site, and both in English and Mandarin immersion.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm really happy to share the outdoor learning space experience with all other principal at our Monday ME meeting, maybe next Monday. Monday admin meeting, maybe next Monday, yep, and then I I also want, I also want to mention that uh Anne, uh our TK. Um staff development um staff, she's like onsite a lot and she visits a lot of classrooms, she also is. One of the person who helped us put together the outdoor learning space, we have our TK and kindergarten teacher, they contribute a lot of ideas. We have been talking about it, cause I like twenty six email to be sent out to parents and have twenty six meeting, that's a lot. And and we reflect and we need to find a way to ensure our students' safety in the school. Thank you.
I think we're gonna wrap it up and move on to our next agenda item, which is eleven point two, recommendation for mathematics curriculum adoption for grade six, three, eight.
Okay, thank you, Kendall Klein um has been working as our one of our ma- our coaches, our math coach, middle school. And she'll be presenting tonight on the math adoption. I think there's a clicker right there, yeah.
That one, there we go, it's been a while, thank you, um yes, I'm Kendall Klein, I am the sixth through eighth grade um teacher on special assignment for middle school math. Um I'm joined by some of our pilot committee members, um here is support and Anastasia Stomates, the K five math coach as well. So we're here to present a recommendation uh to adopt a new curriculum for middle school math. Um so as I mentioned, we have some members here, Rita Philkington, she's a sixth grade math teacher at Kennedy Middle School. Jason Egan, Clifford, seventh and eighth grade, and Zamae, who could not be here this evening, but she um carried another leg of the eighth grade. Class at Rhode Cloud. And I just want to give a big shout out and thank you to them, we did a lot of recruitment um efforts to get more people to join the board, or the board, the adoption committee. And um busy schedules, a lot of other commitments, so uh we really appreciate the time and effort from the three teachers who stepped up um to be a part of this. It's a long pitch, but this gives the overall uh spiel of what we've gone through in the last couple of years. Um so since we have some other people in the building that haven't read it, um two years ago, the district middle school math coach, me. Asked middle school math teachers for their feedback on selecting a curriculum to better meet the needs of our students. Teachers from sixth, seventh and eighth grade volunteered to form a team to evaluate and pilot curricula and provide feedback. We use the twenty twenty three California mathematics framework for the evaluation, specifically focusing on, oop, a little error there. On category four, access and equity, and category five, instructional planning and support. The pilot teachers implemented two units from two different curricula, CPM, which is college preparatory mathematics, inspiring connections version. And illustrative mathematics, um Imagine Learning, which is now going by Imagine IM. Each teacher provided their feedback using a rubric for the evaluation, along with in-person meetings to discuss the benefits of each curriculum. We discussed how each curriculum met the needs of the variety of learners we have in the classroom, from our ELs and multilingual learners. To students with IEPs, five oh fours, our newcomers, our students who are below grade level and students who are above grade level. We also discussed student engagement, access, collaborative opportunities and critical thinking, pilot teachers also pulled their students for feedback on the new curriculums. Using all this data, it was decided through a collaborative consensus process that illustrative mathematics, Imagine Learning, or Imagine IM now. Provide the best solution for middle school math students, and this was um coming from our pilot committee. So that general overview, um I'll go into a little bit more details of the process and um some of the findings that our teachers um came came with. So originally, this is going to be a one-year adoption, our typical adoption process is to analyze curriculum. Pick two or get it down to two, hopefully, and then pilot a unit within the same year. And do the debrief and the consensus and compare and contrast and make a decision. Um with the new frameworks coming along, we use the opportunity in the first year to do a deep dive on the California frameworks. Um we covered chapters one through four and then we jumped to thirteen, cause one through four were more pertinent to the um. The frameworks in general and then specifically to middle school and some other um equity and engagement um focus. As well as chapter thirteen, which is really looking at the evaluation rubrics and criteria uh set forth by um the framework. We developed a rubric from this tool um that the teachers use to evaluate the curriculum. Um and then we go through a pre-screen, teachers look at the curriculum, they look at the content, um what's provided. We get professional learning from the curricular uh publishers and their trainers, uh so they can hit the ground running and implement the units. What's newer uh this round, they require two units to be um implemented, one is really setting the stage for. This type of pedagogy and instruction and then jumping into the content. Um from there, they are during their implementation, they use the rubrics to analyze and collect evidence. Um and we came together and did a um consensus process, a consent to cons- a consent to consensus, which is a similar. Um routine we use in the K five process um with the um with Kim Bambao from county, who is the math coordinator for the county. And so we use that and implement it with the middle school committee as well. Um we kind of were at a place where it was good, in a sense that it was okay, there were still questions to be had and still very curious at seeing what. The other curriculum had to offer, and so with the heavy lift and load of that first year. Um going through all the frameworks, creating the evaluation tool, learning the new curriculum, um and having to do two units. Um we decided to push the second curriculum to a second year. Um some benefits to that were, um we were able to, the uh community teachers were able to find the units that aligned. So there were similar content from both curriculum, so they can have a better comparison. They also um with Imagine IM, cause all of the curriculum, once the new frameworks were um adopted. Were making movement and changes to their curriculum to better align with the uh content of the framework. And so for Imagine IM, more of those pieces have been updated in, as well as their TEs, their teacher additions. Um they updated those and the student workbooks to uh to improve upon them. And so we were able to get a sneak peek and use that as our um tool for implementation. The rest of it looks the same, they pilot, they use the rubrics, collect data, analyze, meet, discuss, debrief, um and come to a consensus. And so through that process with the two curriculum, IM came forward with the higher score. Um and so that brings us here to present our recommendation to the board to adopt Imagine IM. Um if uh after this, there if it moves forward, a public review, uh which we've done in the past with other um pilots. We will have the um curriculum out on display and then we'll reconvene, so. With that, um kind of going in the frameworks, um the state of standards changed, they were adopted revised by April twenty thirteen. I was a facilitator of the middle school adoption back in twenty fifteen. And so we've, um that's when we got CPM. Now we're jumping to twenty twenty three, so really what are some of the differences and why a new framework? So um some of these slides were taken from um a UDL presentation at the county, uh led by Kim Bambao. And so um you'll make note or see note of that, so I have borrowed them from her. But over the course of time, um we did see improvement in math scores across the state. Covid hit, we know that story, um but really what persisted were those opportunity and equity gaps between our student groups. And so the new framework is really written to address these and to close these and to accelerate our groups so that we are all achieving. Um at the highest levels. So what is it? The content standards are the same, so when you look at ed reports, um which evaluates um the alignment of content and standards. Those are the same, what our kids need to learn throughout a year is the same. And the standards for mathematical practice, which are thinking of like student habits of mind of how to engage with mathematics, how we want to them. Um experience to communicate to um to engage with it, hasn't changed. What has changed or added per se is that there's going to be an expectation that the curriculum includes these three things. Drivers of investigations, so I have a little cheat sheet here, um it's really highlighting the purpose of learning mathematics. And making connections to the real world, as well as um really highlighting critical thinking and engagement with the mathematics. Mathematics is not a passive receptive um subject, we want them to think critically and to engage with the. Um wanderings of mathematics to see the purpose and its usefulness. Um not just something to be memorized and to regurgitate. Um also, uh content connections, an emphasis on how mathematical concepts relate across various areas. Um it's a web and not necessarily a ladder, our courses might make it look like a ladder, but the content is connected. Within a grade, across grades, concepts you learn in third, fourth are building and really weaving up to algebra. So we're all connected. And then the big ideas are really, it integrates standards rather than in isolation, okay, so we're focusing on deeper understanding. Stronger conceptual development to really make a lasting impression on their um procedural understandings. And building connections, like I mentioned, within and across grade levels, and so. What's changed is that these are now expectations for curriculum that are being written to include these things. In terms of pedagogy and processes to support teachers in meeting these needs. I forgot my water, hold on one second. So um those of you interested, there's the CDE press release and links to the framework summaries. Um and just to revisit, the frameworks are really aligned with our mission and vision of the district. Um and for those of us who might need a reminder, RCSD creates a safe and supportive, inspirational and rigorous, joyful and inclusive environment for all learners. And our vision is that RCSD will be a thriving, dynamic, innovative and nurturing community where each student realizes their unique gifts and strengths. To achieve high intellectual performances for personal and academic success. And these are our base values, innovation, really encouraging student voice, that equity, so that passion. Um for all students, um engagement and partnerships, so as I mentioned, a lot of these things are connected to the framework. And the big bullet points of what equity means in the framework, all students deserve powerful mathma- mathematics instruction. High-level mathematics achievement is not dependent on rare natural gifts, but rather can be cultivated. And that's what we want to do in our classrooms, we want to bring students to the table and get them immersed with it. All students, regardless of background, language of origin, learning differences or foundational knowledge are capable and deserving of depth of understanding. And engagement in rich mathematical tasks. Student engagement must be a goal in designing mathematics curriculum alongside critical content goals. And students' cultural backgrounds, experiences and languages are resources for teaching and learning mathematics. This is a long quote, I won't read it all, but. This is an excerpt from chapter one in the framework and those bolded words are really the best ways that we know through research. That students learn and commit their understanding of mathematics and build the passion for mathematics. And you'll also notice that a lot of these bolded words are not just limited to mathematics instruction, it's really across every content. And so our goal is to bring those and highlight them in our curriculum and bring curriculum um to our teachers to support this. So as I mentioned, we focus on kind of like a reading group, uh book study, I guess you could say, um with the committee. Um we read the chapters, we took notes, our ponderings, our questions. Um and brought them to the table to discuss and reflect on what that looked like in our current curriculum and what it could look like and what we're looking for in the adoption. When it came to chapter thirteen, we use that as our baseline to really think about the rubric um that we wanted to focus in on. There's a lot of criteria that's provided on these with this tool, um and a lot of it is very similar to the twenty thirteen tool. But they've added and modified some of the language to align with the new framework. And so although we looked at some of the items, um or the criteria numbers listed there in categories one, two and three. We use, uh we really heavily emphasized um category four, access and equity, and category five, instructional planning and support. Another long bulleted list, but wanted to make sure we covered things, so a lot of these are pulled straight from the teachers noticing and one, uh not wondering, but noticing and observations. Um from implementing uh Imagine IM, um if you read through those, you will see a lot of the language that. Is connected to the bolded words we saw in that excerpt from chapter one. Um they saw a lot of problem solving, student collaboration, um noticing and wondering which invited all students into the mathematics. Um students were helping each other, they were also comparing their work, they were going deeper and extending their mathematical ideas. Um and the big thing here, we have a large multilanguage learner population. And one of the best ways to help them learn our language and particularly mathematics is also through language for all students. And so really, um the curriculum provided the on-ramp for them to use that academic language and improve the use of it. And explain their thinking and processes, and they were taking more risks in solving the math, right? Um kids who might feel like they aren't math kids and we have adults that say that too, and our goal is to erase that vocabulary from students. Um so they see themselves as math people and that starts with thinking, engaging in the thinking, trying and taking risks when they're trying to solve problems. Here are some of the teacher preferences in the sense of what was provided by the curriculum, in the sense of providing student engagement and supports for that. Um there were connections to real world um situations that were diverse, they include in um inspire videos. And so through a sequence of a lesson or a unit, they are connecting um videos to the mathematical content. Um daily warmups connected to the lesson, available in Spanish and more languages to come, um something that they provided. Um is a student workbook, both hard copy and digital, and what we found was that. They included scaffolded examples and models and pictures and things that supported a lot of our learners. Um they took a lot of ownership of these notebooks and um still allowed them to draw diagrams and express their thinking in their own way. The online dashboard is pretty um pretty awesome, it includes a lot of other options, so students have an option to do their work. Uh they're online, on a written workbook or for teachers who really like that spiral notebook, that's still a possibility, so there are choices and options for students. That works best for them. And what they saw online was that they also provide some more scaffolds that are not in the notebook. So word banks and multiple choice and things that might scaffold that learning and that support for students who might need that when they're do- doing something independently. Um one thing with the engagements and the supports, so um we know that students come to us with unfinished learning. And so our goal is to close that unfinished learning, fill that in, and IM provides um this through adaptation packets. Okay, and what that does is when, we'll talk more about it, but there's a check your readiness assessment before every unit. And it will assess what students know or need to know to jump right into the content. In the rubrics and the um item analysis, it'll let them know, you as a teacher, um what is it exactly the student needs? And it ties it back to a previous IM lesson that can go back to third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade with a lesson that will help the student. Close or the student, the teacher, close that gap with an instructional lesson to build a concept and then jump into the grade level content faster. So it's providing that that on-ramp for us. It also has extension problems that are you ready for more, so students who get that, they have the opportunity to rise to the next challenge. Um they very much look like a performance tasky kind of question where you have to answer questions quantitatively. But there's usually some sort of response where you need to answer in written form. And um the other program we adopted did not have this, um IM has the accelerated program, which is the three years in two model. Which is what we currently have right now, um and so that is already uh written and packaged, ready to go. Lots here, what they found beneficial, there's a lot of information within the units, within the sections and within the lessons about what to expect. What does it include, how are we gonna teach it, where are the model mathematical models we're going to use? Highlight any misconceptions or common misconceptions that students will have, um they provide um. Slide decks for teachers with teacher notes to guide them through the instructions, particularly when you're learning a new curriculum, having those little. Um notes on the side uh with directions on instructional strategies um and routines are very beneficial. Um I think I mentioned this already, potential errors, so it highlights those and helps teachers prepare in their planning to be ready for any of those potential misconceptions. So that they are ready with those um prompting questions or scaffolding questions um to help their students. Um let's open. Yeah, um little bit more, um lot of sentence frames, guided questions, discussion supports for our multilanguage learners. Um the directions for the instructional routines and the big one, the mathematical language routines that comes out of Stanford, it's been around for a while. It's usually been something in a curriculum where teachers reach out and pull it, right, and put it in their bank to use. This curriculum specifically incorporates it and they will show you a whole progression across grades of where you see it being used. And in what lesson, so you can see the flow, um and again, it's really getting kids to talk mathematically and support them in their language acquisition as well. For our multilanguage learners. Okay, next one, the monitoring, student thinking and understanding. Um we need to assess our students and it's not just always the end of the chapter test, it's not always just the S back. We need to see those little pieces along their journey and um IM provides a lot of those. Um the check your readiness, like I mentioned, kind of like the pre-assessment and guide teachers in knowing what the students might need to unlock their learning in the next unit. The daily cooldowns, um and they are directly tied to the learning goal of that lesson, so it's very clear for the teacher to see what the student. And what the students understood or what they might need going into the days uh ahead. Um section checkpoints are really, um like think of quizzes, so after a few lessons, there are questions that are um addressing the section goals. So you've got least lesson goals, section goals, and then the unit goals, and there's an assessment for all of those. Um mid-units for longer units, um as I mentioned, the end of unit assessments, and all of them come with some sort of rubric. Um where it will kind of standardize the score, but it gives the what is needed. Where it will kind of standardize the score, but it gives the, what is needed to attain that score. Again, also followed up with suggestions of possible misconceptions so that teachers can take that back in their planning. It's also provided online and or print, which is really beneficial. As you guys were just talking about S back and LPAC that's online. There is a new, a skill set that students need from reading a computer to then showing work on paper to them being able to answer something on a computer. That, that is another skill set. And so it really supports that. So it doesn't feel as shocking or drawing later on. There is some auto scoring involved. So when you're a teacher, particularly a single subject at a comprehensive middle school and you have hundreds of kids to score. The auto score just is the quantitative, but then that opens it up for teachers to spend more time analyzing the student writing responses, which is also on S back. It's called the performance task and it is multi-mixed problem solving type of question with multiple questions. Which require quantitative answers as well as written responses. So Imagine IM, it's a combination of two things. Illustrious mathematics has been an open resource for education for a long time. It is owned or co-founded with, by William McCollum. And, and he was one of the lead writers of the Common Core state standards. And so there's a deep connection to the rigor and the expectations and the type of items that our students need to prepare for embedded throughout that curriculum. And Imagine Learning is the learning platform, which is the computer portion. So that's the teacher dashboard. That's the dashboard for students if they decide to do an assignment online. So illustrious mathematics is the content and the curriculum. Imagine Learning is the online dashboard that we access it through. Illustrious mathematics have certified partners. And so Imagine Learning is one of them. There are two others. But they are certified partners with Illustrious Mathematics. And so from that framework that we talked about earlier, all the curriculum coming forth now is going to be really focused on incorporating that problem-based learning. And so what that means, a little bit of a comparison. The Gradual Release Model, the I do, we do, you do, is one model of instruction and problem-based is another that kind of flips it on its head, so to speak. Gradual Release is great for explicit instruction, some guided practice, and then you turn the students loose to do some independent practice. That's where a lot of the teacher responsibility is on the explicit and then the independent practices towards the end. Problem-based though, is that idea of invitation to the mathematics. You are providing students questions or activities or tasks that get them to start thinking about the mathematics. That think time then goes into activity time where they are collaborating. So they're collaborating with a partner, they're collaborating in a team, collaborating maybe whole class back and forth. But that is where they are now sharing their thinking and their ideas. And through that process, the teacher is guiding that synthesis of their, their thinkings and their wonderings to put them together to meet the learning objective. So the teacher knows what the goal of the lesson is and from the interactions with the students and seeing what they do now, building from their strengths to take that understanding into meeting the lesson goal. And so we have the grade level, within the grade level, we have the units, within the units are sections and within the sections are the lessons. And so what I was kind of talking about that problem-based and just illustration of, you know, sections within the units and lessons within the section. But within the whole curriculum from three, five, we didn't, this, this image does not show K through two. But it shows the intricate connections of that web of mathematics and shows the very planned, precise flow of content and where it leads and where it builds upon. And that is partially one of the ways that they have created those adaptation packets, right, to backwards map to where, what students might need. So very connected. Then we see it from middle school to Algebra one. Again, the connections and, you know, the reliance of completing those assignments, completing those lessons so that students can finish their learning. We talked about assessments already. I'm going to skip to that one. All right. So back to that problem-based pedagogy and looking at the overarching design structure. And so what, the flow they take is no matter at what level of the curriculum you're in, whether it's unit to section to lesson, they're, they're following an invitation to the mathematics. They get a deep study of concepts and procedures, and then there's a synthesis and cooldown. And again, sorry, these got out of order somehow. So at the lesson level, you have a warm-up. That's the invitation. You have the activities and then the synthesis and cooldown. Within each of those, you have like another mini-cycle. And this mini-cycle is a predictive, predictable routine for students. And we've seen it's very beneficial so that when kids that know the routine that's coming through, it opens up other avenues to take in the math and to engage with the math. And so in the warm-up, there's a launch, kids get some work time, and then you're synthesizing that part of the lesson. You then work your way into activities. There could be two to three, depending on the lesson. Again, with each activity, you have a launch. You're helping to ensure that students understand the task and the activity that's about to come. Cover vocabulary, language, give them the work time. Again, that can be independent thinking time. That translates to the pair share, to make meaning, to share their understandings. And then work towards that goal and then towards the end. And even during, the teacher is working on actively synthesizing what they're hearing and seeing in the classroom to pull that knowledge base from the kids to make that math community. And then the synthesis and cooldown, again, synthesize, bringing everybody together, connecting all the dots from the activities. And then giving them the cooldown to see what they were able to take in at that lesson, knowing the scope and sequence of what's coming up, that this will come again. And so how do I plan for when it shows up again and how do I support that? This is more just a graphic of showing, you know, like I said, at any point in the curriculum, whether you're at the unit level, the lesson level or the activity level, they each go through these three phases. So the invitation, the deep study and the procedure of the concepts and procedures, and then the consolidating and applying. So it's happening either at an introductory lesson, right, instructional to culminating. Or in a lesson level, warm-up to classroom activities to synthesis and cooldown, or in the activity, the launch, the work time and the synthesis. There's more information on this within their program, but they really have intentionally, again, with all the curriculum that are working towards incorporating things that meet the California standard or the new California frameworks. Universal Design for Learning, Access for Students with Diverse Abilities, the Instructional Routines, particularly the mathematical language ones, and then the extensions for students who are ready for more. So after this process of the month of public review and depending where you guys take us. It's important to be mindful, and I think I can piggyback off of what Winnie's just said, is that curriculum, instruction, pedagogy, particularly with new curriculum, requires professional learning. And so what is great now, which is what CPM, our current one had and was ahead of the time, they provided in-house professional development. So it's connected directly to the curriculum you're teaching. IM does the same. And so these are just some examples of what they have kind of put together as a flow. But we do have a professional learning representative who also recognizes that we are, our, our middle school teachers have done problem-based and collaborative types of teaching before. And so there is a menu that you can choose to meet the needs of the teachers based on how they're feeling six weeks out from our next PD day and then pick a PD that would be the most beneficial for them. So I think that's it. Thank you for your time.
Thanks Kendall for walking us through the, both the adoption process and the curriculum there. And so then this is the beginning of like a much longer process, right? We're just getting the information and I can discuss it. Then it goes out for review for, public review for 30 days, right? And then we move on from there. Okay, good. I'll open it up to the board for questions, comments and discussion.
Again, thank you for the presentation. I appreciate your passion and obviously the teachers are piling this curriculum for their commitment to, to Redwood City. There's definitely a lot of information and I was like, you said it so clearly. So I really don't have any questions. I, I'm looking forward to it because I trust, I trust the educator's judgment, judgment. I'm really looking forward to it. And one of the things that I wanted to say is Ms. Pilkington was my son's sixth grade teacher during COVID. And I do want to tell you, you had a board member watching you almost every morning. When, obviously that's when we went shelter in place. And so I do want to admire, want to say that I admire the way you taught. Although I was, you know, working and kind of listening because I could multitask, I appreciate as, as a student, when, and, and we have wonderful teachers, right? But when you're like, you were so calm and just like the way you were teaching him and he got a good grade in your class and he's doing well in high school. So I, I appreciate that. So I just wanted to make that comment because I know a lot of the times we really don't have the time and even when we go out and make observations, we really don't talk to the teachers. So I just want to tell you, you know, you do make a difference. People are watching without you knowing. But anyway, I really, I really do appreciate it. So thank you so much for all the work that you guys do for Redwood City.
Any others, any others, David?
Sure, I'll go. So the, the old Russian proverb is dobraya no proveria or trust but verify. And so I, I love the thoughtful process here in terms of curriculum selection. I did my own research. Thumbs up. Yeah, you guys picked the right one. So nice work there. I love the focus on metacognition, you know, really focusing students on capturing the uncertainty, being okay to be uncertain. Just as an inversion from a classroom where it's like, you're kind of supposed to know the right answer and raise your hand and blurt out the right answer. And you don't actually learn anything in that environment. So just like that, again, the grounding in pedagogy moving forward to how do human beings actually learn things and applying that in the classroom? Thumbs up. This stuff is also not like abstract, like earlier today, I actually had to administer a math test to some, to a professional to decide whether or not they would get a job at my company. So like this stuff is real and it really matters for, for real life. So overall, just thumbs up, good job. We picked the right curriculum. I, I get curious about things like mastery-based instruction, especially given the dense interconnectedness of the subject material. As you said, it's not just a simple ladder. There's this complex web, web of dependencies. I think it's really important to not move a student into an environment where they really don't have the prerequisites down. Cause that's just going to continue compounding the uncertainty they have about the subject. So I'm wondering, what's the degree to which mastery-based learning is incorporated into this?
So with this curriculum, with the amount of formative assessments, you're able to catch. We, schools have MTSS coordinators and structures onsite. But really from, you know, when we have kids sitting in our class, our goal is to teach grade level standards and identify those missing pieces that we can do just-in-time supports. And make that clarity so that they are applying it to something that they are learning in class. There's lots of studies that show by repeating courses, it does not necessarily is effective either. Full tracking kids all day, also shows not. So there is, there's always a little bit of everything that needs to come into it. But our number equity is making sure every kid in our district is getting grade level content at their grade level. And then putting those supports and having really formative data to help us meet those needs. And I'm sure other sites have other examples of the MTSS, just like Winnie was kind of mentioning. But if we don't have those common assessments or those ongoing mini-assessments to inform us, we can't catch that. And so we want to also anticipate catching it and so it doesn't develop over time.
Cool. Last question, again, unsurprising comment for me, but we, we know that a number of different classrooms have got very different levels of students. It looks like you've got some great accommodations for that. Can we incorporate peer instruction?
So part of the problem-based pedagogy and cognitively guided instruction is having some of that peer tutoring going on. It takes some training and I'm going to put a plug in right now. We have teachers that have been working with PeerTeach, which is a, a research group from Stanford. And so we have a handful of teachers that have been using it and it is like a coaching training ground to help kids learn how to do that. And so we're seeing some progress with that, but, and the kids are enjoying it and the teachers are enjoying it. So it's also very helpful, I think, for the teacher to see and learn what that is because they do it as teachers. And so coaching kids on how to tutor, that's also quite a big task, but it, it, the, the way it works has been pretty awesome. And they are making adjustments and adaptations based on the feedback from the teachers. And so, yeah.
So cool. Thank you. Yeah, this is exciting. And it's going to align our K through five math curriculum with our middle school one, which I think is really neat. And the, the one thing that is really visible when you see it in practice and we hear about it all the time is just how different it is to have the start with that you do and, and struggle, right? And have to watch the students kind of struggle their way through it and, and put it in there. Is that, I would, I was, didn't realize that, is that part of the math framework to switch to that model? Or was that really something that's specific to illustrious math?
It is talked about in the framework and a lot of it comes back to the drivers of investigation. If we don't, there's a saying by Dan Myers, he's a big math guru, is kids need to have, you have to create a headache and then you're the aspirin. And so by giving them thinking tasks or getting them welcomed into it and to be curious and not know the answer right away. You're creating a headache in a good way, like let's, let me put, make that clear, it's in a good way. But then the engagement and the working together and doing knowledge mobility where kids are learning from other kids. You're realizing that aspirin is not just the teacher all the time. The teacher's still on point to synthesize and to connect the dots or to guide and frame questions appropriately. But you want them to get that curiosity and you have to create a little bit of a huh, why is that? Otherwise it's more passive and, you know, that's not as fun personally.
Totally. Okay. Well, great. And you know, and I'm really encouraged by the emphasis on equity and access, same with the K through five curriculum. You know, it's, it's really great to just ensure that all our students, regardless of their background or ability of, you know, access to this high-quality math instruction. So we need to, well, we'll see how it goes through the public hearing, when it comes down for future adoption, but everything looks really positive. Thanks.
Thank you Kendall and your group for all your hard work. And then just one question. If this is selected and we start, of course, in August when we come back, what is that professional development really going to look like? Because you know, there was anxiety last go around, right? Anastasia with the elementary. So.
Yeah, we're fine tuned.
Okay, perfect, perfect.
Well, but also too, just like with everything, like they are innovative. They have reflected on some of the PD and like the map or flow that I showed you and some of the courses are the same, but they've also fine tuned it, right? Like they are practitioners also. And so they've reflected in there adapting some of their PD. Already created kind of a flow map of what it could look like. And then my friends here are also going to look and see like, after they've gone through it, like which one of these would, you know, what they suggested, is that what would be the most beneficial? So, and, oh, and I presented all, all this to our math teachers on the January 6th PD. So they have the full scope. They've got, they got a little bit of a access to the public review earlier. So they're kind of exploring and, so yeah, so they're, they've been introduced and explained. And so we'll see where it all goes.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you again to my crew back here. They were quiet, but I don't blame you. It's a little, I always get a little nervous still. Thank you.
All right. Excellent. Let's move on to our next agenda item is the public hearing regarding the Connect Community Charter School Renewal Petition. Rick is going to go and grab who we need. Then we have a presentation. We have some public comment. I think we'll do the presentation and then take public comment and then we can, we'll do the, oh, no, we'll take the public comment during the public hearing. Right, right. Okay, great. Yeah, well, that's true. You could do it that time if you want it. Rick, do you want to just go ahead and he'll start? He has something.
Good evening, board members and members of the community. Tonight, we're here to discuss Connect Charter Schools Renewal Petition and the public hearing. Connect Community Charter Schools last charter renewal was a Connect Community Charter Schools last charter renewal was approved by the district board for a term of July one, two thousand seventeen through June thirtieth, twenty twenty two. Due to the pandemic and suspension of the California Dashboard, the legislature enacted legislation that automatically extended Connect's charter for an additional three years. As a result, the current Connect Charter term was automatically extended through June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. Connect submitted a petition to the district seeking renewal of the charter for a five year term from July one, twenty twenty five through June thirtieth, twenty thirty. District staff and legal are in the process of analyzing the petition documents submitted by Connect and will be communicating with Connect about any issues and changes that may be needed. This evening's public hearing is required by the education code, so the board may consider the level of support for the renewal petition by the teachers, other employees and parents of the district. This public hearing is an information item only, and it is anticipated that Connect's renewal petition will be presented to the board for action at the February twenty six, twenty twenty five board meeting. Representatives from the charter school are present and wish to address the board regarding their renewal petition. They'll be given up to fifteen minutes for that purpose. After hearing from petitioners, the board will take and consider any public comment regarding the renewal petition as part of the public hearing. I will now turn things back uh over to you, President Wells, to proceed with the public hearing regarding the Connect Community Charter School Renewal Position.
Okay, do we open the public hearing before the presentation or?
Yes, I can open the public hearing. Uh, they'll give the presentation and then you can take comments.
Okay, all right, then uh, let's open up the public hearing at eight thirty two. Uh, and um, we'll start with, I'd like to invite Haley up to have a do a presentation that you provided for this agenda item. And then after that, we will do public comment. I'm going to look and see how many uh speakers we have and we'll decide on the time limit uh with our policy. If it's over ten, we start reducing the amount of time um from three minutes down to two or one, depending on the number, but we'll do that then. So uh, I'll pass it to you, Haley.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, like you said, I'm Haley Dupree. I'm the principal at Connect Community Charter and I am joined by parents, current students, staff members and some alumni and community members. So we had a few people have to leave because they live far away and they have young kids, but we have quite a crowd and some speakers tonight. So just uh, I will move on to here. So uh, Connect opened in two thousand thirteen, um you were saying, and I was one of the actual founding members of Connect back in the day. We are a TK through eight school with a focus on SCL and PBL in our charter. So tonight I thought I would just include a few elements from the petition. You have that. Um, but I wanted to focus on some of the progress we're making this year and the many initiatives that we have implemented and plan to implement going forward. So this is just a screenshot from this year and last year's California Dashboard. We are super proud that we are out of the red on everything. Uh, you can see that we are um especially for English language product learner progress in the green. Of course, we have some progress to make for English learners and uh, excuse me, for English language arts. I'm nervous and math. Um, and we are working on that. I wanted to call attention to these charts that are in the petition. This is some data that compares our continuously continuously enrolled students, students who have been at our school for more than two years to um students who uh are newly enrolled. So that might be newcomers or students who have transferred to Connect. And what you see in the top two graphs are um ELA in math and it's Connect's growth as compared to the state's growth. So you can see that for students who have been at Connect more than two years, we're really seeing a lot of growth. And um, just to be clear, the state data is actually twenty two, twenty three, because we didn't have the this year's before we had to submit the petition. Uh, similarly, that bottom graph shows that shows the difference between continuously enrolled students and new students and their distance from standard. So again, we see like there's quite a significant difference in students who have been at Connect uh for some amount of time. Um, obviously, it's still below standard and we're working on that, but we feel that the progress we're making uh is definitely stands out. Uh, I'm going to skip this slide. You have it in the packet. This is from our NWA MAP testing uh winter, excuse me, fall to winter. But since I have a limited time, I'm going to focus on the data that is shows a year's progress, again, to call attention to how our students are really making progress when they're with us over time. So this graph shows the winter twenty twenty three to winter twenty twenty four NWA MAP. The top row in in that first section is for math and the the very top row shows growth. So you can see that overall in grades three through eight, Connect students are in the seventy third percentile in growth on the NWA MAP over a year's time. And then like that forty percent blue shows that forty percent of our students are in the eightieth percentile or higher in growth. So again, I think it's really important to see that over time, we are really uh noticing a lot of progress in our students. And then similar for reading and language use. That progress is is usually a little bit lower for us because we have so many English learners and they're testing in English. We have a lot of newcomers joining our school last year. I think we had about twenty. Many are from rural areas where they haven't um had a lot of schooling and and their literacy, we're, you know, trying to support their literacy skills. Um, but again, it's to uh point out our growth. For um TK through two, and we are wrapping up our winter assessment, so wasn't able to have any charts in there. Uh, and there's been a lot of absences and illness and some glitches and wrapping up that assessment data. I'd be happy to email it to you later. We adopted um Amplify M Class as a literacy screener. So we are lucky that's on one of the the state approved lists going forward and we've been pilot, we started piloting it this year. And that has shown us that in our kindergarten through second grade, about forty three percent of our students moved up a full level. So for example, if they were well below, they moved to below. If they were at grade level, they moved to above grade level. So about forty three percent. And of the students who didn't move a full level, we still are seeing growth. We have, you know, very few students in a K two who are um just at the same level. Uh, and then in terms of our English learners, I'll talk to you more about our newcomer program, but in that, we are also finding that our newcomers are either meeting or approaching standards. So similarly, making that good growth. For special education, I actually don't have data to show you on this slide, but I wanted to talk about our special education program. Uh, we have a full inclusion model at Connect. We have two special education teachers and seven paraprofessionals. So we have quite a team supporting our students with IEPs. And we definitely follow all of the laws, help students so to uh, sorry, we implement their accommodations and uh work as a team to support our students with IEPs. Just one data point, last year, we reclassified nine EL students and thirty percent of that or three students were actually students with IEPs. So we're seeing a lot of growth in our English learners who have IEPs as well. Let's see, what's next? So how have we done all this? We um, like the district, have a lot of initiatives that we have started in the last couple of years. We have a one point five literacy specialists at Connect and last year they started doing a ton of research about the science of reading, looking at curriculum, looking at pedagogy, attending workshops, you know, sending me podcasts, doing everything they could so that we could start moving towards uh implementing the science of reading. This year they are co-teaching, they are running PD with teachers and teaching assistants. They work with individuals, small groups. And this uh literacy, this these literacy specialists have really helped move our uh students along. I would say in the past, I would walk in a room during reading time and students were not confident readers. Like they might be turning the pages, looking at the pictures. And now when I walk in a room, I really see every student reading and they're talking about their reading. They come in the office and read the wall and they want to show off their reading. So that's been a tremendous growth and we plan to continue that. We've updated our reading curriculum. In the past, we did a, our model was really a lot of teacher created material and we realized like that wasn't really working and especially at those younger ages. So we've moved to a much more systematic, comprehensive uh literacy curriculum in those grades. We adopted also if for ELD, we have a systematic ELD that we're using, um, and then our educational software. One thing we also started this year is a newcomer class. And actually, I got the idea from watching one of your meetings. Uh, so our newcomers uh go three times a week for seventy five minutes with a specialist and we have them grouped by first to third grade and fourth to eighth grade. We're such a small school that we really need to to have those uh larger age ranges. Uh, and they are also making tremendous progress in their English. Lots of professional development. We have partnership with the county. We've been working on UDL. We have another partnership with World Savvy, which is kind of a coaching model. Our teachers, six times a year, are recording a lesson and sending them off to a coach and getting lots of uh feedback about their teaching. We've done uh PBL training. We're using the elevation platform for ELD curriculum. So lots and lots of training initiatives. Every Wednesday staff meeting is a different training topic. So that, I think, has been really instrumental in helping to move our students forward and to see that progress that I showed you. Um, there was a video. I don't know. I don't know if this will work, but you can see the text. We had a student of an English learner say, good afternoon. The question being asked, I feel good that my daughter is attending this school. They support her a lot. They treat her the children well. They care for them. It's very beautiful. She didn't know much English before, but now she has learned other words. I like the way they teach them. Just a little video. Okay, school climate is another area of success for us. You can see uh, we have our suspensions have declined to under one percent. Uh, and I would say that the climate at Connect is um I wanted to say friendly, but that's not the right word. Uh, we have a really safe open caring community. And whenever people come on our campus, they give us that feedback, like I love being here. Your kids are so nice. It's such, your staff is so welcoming. Uh, and so we really are feeling that. And I'll talk to you more about our comprehensive counseling program, which I think has been instrumental to helping create that environment. We started partnering last year with Cassie, so we have a full time school based therapist through Cassie. We also had a full time counselor last year. This year is about fifty percent. Uh, you can see that the Cassie counselor had four hundred sixty five sessions. She started in October, so that was October through the end of the year. And that was really amazing. I mean, I think we were still seeing students with, well, you can see a lot of anxiety and anger, behavior issues post COVID. And she really worked with so many kids to help them with what they were going through and uh to be successful at school. Oops, I skipped a slide. In terms of our school climate, I'm skipping around just a little bit. I just wanted to mention that we have really strong student and staff retention, about ninety percent this year. So we just had three teachers leave last year. Two of them, just as they lived really far away and um, one, we had a teacher pass away last year, so we had a sub in her for for her. So that was great. And I think that's another element of our success, like having staff who know each other, who know the kids, who know our program. It really has made a huge difference this year. And then our continuous enrollment this year is about ninety one percent. We actually had six students return from other schools, so they left um and then decided to come back to Connect because they felt it was a better fit. So that's always reassuring. Um, our counseling program, we started working on this about two years ago and really, uh, what we have at Connect is we're all on the same page. Everybody, teachers and paraprofessionals all attend the same trainings. And I think we all approach students in a similar way and we have a caring approach. We want to support students. So whenever anybody sees a student who looks like they might be off, having a bad day, we fill out a referral for them to see either the counselor or the school based therapist. And we really try to take this proactive approach. And through that, we've really decreased uh any kind of disruptive behaviors or problems because we get to kids before the problem escalates. So we try to anyway, and for the most part, we do. So we continue with Cassie this year. You can see the number of clients and visits. Um, and our kids are starting to self refer as well. Counsel, the counseling room is a really safe place. Sometimes they try and get out of class to go to the counseling room and hang out. Um, but they're super comfortable coming. They'll come to me and say, you know, Ms. Haley might be crying. Can I go check in with Mr. Eddie? And so we do the referral. And counseling has become a norm at our school, and I really think that this has made a huge difference for us. Uh, some other initiatives that create a positive school cul- school culture. We have a school wide SCL program. We've been, that's been part of Connect since we opened, but the difference is we are in our third year with the same trainer, the same curriculum. We are starting to speak the same language around that, whereas before it was maybe a little bit more peaceful now, piecemeal. Now we have some continuity. We're doing SCL with our cross age buddy classes. Those are really fun to watch. We have a permaculture project happening, so we're working on greening the campus and uh it's much more complex than I can say here tonight, but it's essentially transforming some of the green spaces into more sustainable spaces with native plants to attract pollinators. The garden is uh thanks to a partnership with the district, we've put in drip irrigation. We're going to grow some food. Those can be outdoor classrooms of the science education. So we're excited about that. This is our second year. And uh, I think a real cornerstone of our our school climate is also our in-house after school program. So our paraprofessionals, we call them teaching assistants, they run our after school program. So they are with our kids all day long. They know our kids. It's a seamless transition. And they spend so many hours with kids. They are like the backbone of our school. And when kids go to our after school program, you know, they get academics, STEM activities, healthy snack, but they really just have a really caring team. And then our teaching assistants have great relationships with families. Often families um will go to our teaching assistants as a first uh, as the first person if there's an issue or they have a question. And the slide. Let's check. Am I not, sorry? Sorry. Well, I don't remember, but I'm going to run out of time, so I'll move on to the next slide, but I think there was a little bit more. Uh, and then enrichment. So we believe strongly in in providing enrichment for our students, opportunities that they might not might not be able to get outside of a school. We have an art and a music teacher. We've brought in dance teachers. We've tried to start a middle school elective programs. We, you only have about sixty or seventy middle schoolers right now. It's hard to have a big rich elective program, but we have tried with sports, music, PE. Uh, this year we put on a play, a musical in December. There's study hall, student government. So we really try to think creatively and work as a team. Lots and lots of field trips. Our seventh and eighth graders are going to Yosemite next week. Um, and all of our fourth through eighth graders take an overnight trip every year. So that's a big investment for us. We started a leadership group, so our, that's mainly middle school. And they've helped with things like spirit weeks, but also things with much more responsibility. When we had parent conferences, they were at the table welcoming parents, pointing them out where to go, checking if they had, were on parent square and helping them get on parent square. So we're really trying to create more leadership opportunities for our middle school, especially. We've had volleyball and like football, some lunchtime clubs. And then we also work with science from scientists who come in and teach uh some hands on science. And that we have these three young gentlemen, two of the three young gentlemen here tonight, so I won't play the video. They might, they might want to talk. So I'm not sure if I'm over my fifteen minutes or where I'm at, but uh, that is what I have for you and I'm open to questions. I guess I just want to say I really look forward to working with you. It's been a pleasure serving the community. We love our school. Staff loves our school. Kids love our school and we look forward to being around for longer.
All right. Thank you, Haley, for the presentation. I think we'll move into our uh speakers now, our public comment. Um, we have eight speakers cards, so we're going to allow up to three minutes for each one. Uh, and then when I call your name, just come up to the podium where Haley was presenting. Um, the first one is Julio Seguita. Did I get that last name right? Probably not.
One of our speakers might uh speak in Spanish tonight.
Yeah.
Muy buenas tardes. Muy agradecidos por su tiempo, por escuchar, pero sobre todo por atender a estos niños que son el futuro de esta comunidad. Yo creo en ello. Yo creo en ello. Creo también en cada uno de estos profesores. Uno de mis hijos estudió en esa escuela y ahora está en una universidad. Por eso en este momento, unido a cada uno de estos padres, viéndolo usted, viendo sus rostros, les puedo dejar saber que en esta comunidad existe un futuro. Existe porque depende de ustedes, de la creencia que ustedes tengan hacia nosotros, hacia esta comunidad. Porque estos niños, estos maestros, solo que reflejan el futuro de nuestra comunidad en tiempos venideros. Así que con mucho respeto hacia ustedes, les doy las gracias por atendernos, por escucharnos, pero sobre todo sabiendo que ustedes son papás que creen en lo que nuestros hijos pueden hacer, que creen que lo que ustedes decidan es el futuro para todos estos niños. Nosotros como papás venimos aquí. Tuvimos que esperar un poco más de tiempo, pero sabemos que cuando tenemos la confianza, nosotros podemos lograr lo que nosotros queremos. En estos momentos, mi corazón está muy alegre de verlos. Es la primera oportunidad que tengo de conocerlos. Es un placer. Confío en ustedes, que ustedes podrán hacer el futuro de estos niños muy grande. Porque eso es, tengo alguien aquí atrás de mí, es un muchacho que ha logrado sobresalir. ¿Por qué? Porque ustedes han puesto sus decisiones en muchas de nuestras comunidades. Les estoy muy agradecido y gracias por creer en nosotros, porque somos latinos, porque creen en nosotros y sus decisiones serán para el futuro de estos muchachos. Muy agradecido en este día por escuchar y sobre todo por creer en nosotros. Sus decisiones, al ver cada uno de sus rostros, los puedo observar. Puedo entender lo que ustedes piensan, pero sobre todo sé que ustedes creen en nosotros y ese es un valor muy grande que puede reflejarse. Gracias por creer en nosotros. Estamos muy agradecidos. Tome en cuenta estas palabras como papá. Ustedes que son papás también, confían, ¿verdad? Confía en que cuando ustedes dejan a sus hijos con los profesores, sus hijos están bien. El caso de mi hija ha sido uno de los más grandes conocidos en la escuela, en la escuela Connect. Para mí, el dejar a nuestra hija en la escuela es una seguridad. Eso es lo que le pedimos a ustedes, que confíen en esos maestros, que los puedan ayudar en todo lo que ellos quieran. Muy agradecido.
Thank you. I'm gonna have to interrupt there. And Gonzalo's online, and he's here. All right, so Gonzalo will provide the translation.
Thank you. We're gonna do the interpretation in English. Good afternoon. Very grateful for your time and for listening, and more than anything, to attending to these kids that are the future of this community. I believe in them. I also believe in every single one of these teachers. One of my kids studied in that school, and now he's at the university. Therefore, at this point in time, here with every single one of these parents and listening to you and looking at your faces, I can let you know that this community, in this community, there's a future and exists because it's depending on you and the belief, how much you can believe in this community. Because these kids, these teachers are representing the future of our community. And for more time to come, and so with a lot of respect towards you, I thank you for taking care of us, for listening to us. But more than anything, knowing that you are parents, that you believe in what our kids can do, that you believe that what you decide is going to be the future for all of these kids. And so us, as parents, we're here. We had to wait for a little longer, but we know that when we have the trust, we can do powerful things. And at this point in time, my heart is very joyful to see you. This is the first time that I get a chance to meet you. It's a pleasure to meet you, and I trust that you you will create the future for these kids, very bright, very big. Because that is, I have someone behind me. He's a kid that has been able to excel because you have put your decisions in a lot of our communities, and so I'm very grateful. And thank you for believing in us, because we are Latinos, and because you believe in us, and your decisions are going to create the future of these kids. Very grateful and very thankful for, thank you for listening, and more than anything, for believing in us. Your decisions, when you see, and when I see your faces, I can observe you, and I can understand what you're thinking. But more than anything, I know that you believe in us, and that is a great value that you can reflect in us. Thank you for believing in us. We are very grateful. And please take into account these words as a parent, you that are our parents as well. You trust, correct? You trust that when you drop off your kids, leave them at school with the teachers, your kids are well. And that's the case of my daughter. My daughter's case has been one of the most well-known cases at school, at Connect School. For me, dropping our daughter at school, it's safety. It's safe. And so that's what we request from you, to trust, continue trusting in the teachers, that they can help them as much as you can. Very grateful.
Thank you, Gonzalo, and gracias, Julio. Our next speaker is Chantel Garcia. Hadley. Speaker after that is Amanda Vaughn.
Hello. I've been a teacher for sixteen years, and this is my third year at Connect. I'm going to speak about the art program because I'm the art teacher at Connect. I am also the teacher for all the newcomer students. As we said, we had about twenty new students that came to our school that were also new to this country. And I am just so, so proud of the work that this school does to serve the students, particularly the newcomer students. And I just wanted to say that I have a lot of experience teaching newcomer students because sixteen years ago, systematic ELD was first brought up as a training, and I actually received that training sixteen years ago. So I'm familiar with this program, and I've really never seen it implemented in such a way as it is done here because I'm able to work with small groups of students. Not only that, but we have students, we have teachers that teach and can teach in Spanish and can hear the needs of these students and can really address the needs of these students. And I'm not only seeing the newcomer students one-on-one in small groups, I'm also seeing them in their classroom settings. So I'm seeing them multiple times a day. And I think that's one of the reasons why we've seen such tremendous growth with our newcomer students. I also want to speak just briefly about the art program. I've been a committed art teacher for so many years. I've run my own art program. I've actually taught art here in Redwood City through the Community School of Music and Art. I've been at North Star. I've been at Roy Cloud. I've been at John Gill, which is now Orion. So I've seen all of the art programs that have been going on in Redwood City and actually all over the Bay Area. And I'm really proud of the curriculum that is happening at this school. Not only is it encouraging students to create artwork, but it's encouraging students to reflect and to speak about why they created artwork, how they created it, to give reflections about what other students have done. So I wanted to speak a little bit about both of these programs because I'm so proud to be a part of them. I'm so proud to be at this school and witness the growth that's happened in just the short three years that I've been there, but also to see the students that come back after school, and you're going to meet a few of them, and just to come back to see the teachers that they've developed relationships with. And like I said, I see students throughout, I see the same students throughout this day. And I think the students here, they don't just see one teacher when they come to Connect. Haley has really, Mr. Pu, our leader, has really given a lot of responsibility to the staff and a lot of wonderful training. So I'm proud to be a part of this school.
Thank you, Amanda, for sharing your experiences as a teacher. Our next speaker is Maida Okalo.
Good afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity. My name is Maida Okalo, and I'm originally from Kenya. And I came to this country to study mass communications research and public administration eventually. I worked for a very long time as the community services director for the city of East Palo Alto until I retired and actually got into teaching. And initially, I worked through a placement agency, so I worked in schools from Peters to San Francisco, public schools, charter schools, private schools. And Connect was one of the schools. So why did I join Connect? And why did I propose to them that it made more sense, you know, to contract with a long-term sub instead of every time a teacher's not available, you know, getting a sub that does not know the kids and so on and so forth? So I found Connect's program, particularly around social-emotional learning and, you know, project-based learning, extremely attractive. And because of those two emphasis that they had, I proposed to them that I could be a long-term contract guest teacher. And the ease with which the administration accepted that also, you know, certainly impressed me. I'm hoping that the district renews the charter because I think the school is involved in something phenomenal. And I think we are transforming the lives of kids educationally. I've seen kids who came in here, did not speak a word of English, and one of them may be speaking to you tonight, and I'm sure you'll be impressed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Maida. Okay, our next speaker, looks like it's Monique Plusalis. Put that in. Then our one after that is Anton Estonio.
Yeah, good evening. First, I'd like to acknowledge all our alumni students who have showed up to this meeting. I am beyond proud that they're even here, and I think it speaks volumes about our school that they are in attendance. And from what I've heard, some of them might actually speak, which I can tell you right now is a little nerve-wracking. Well, let me continue. So I'm the music teacher at Connect. I teach general music to the lower school. And as students go through our program, I start introducing some basic keyboard, ukulele. I also run an ukulele club after school and a cello club, which I just started. I'm actually a cellist, so it's great to actually, to teach this instrument that I know so well to students. And I was able to acquire these instruments through donations from a nonprofit. Oh, I'm running out of time. Okay, so I'm going to get right to what I want to say. And this is regarding the musical that we premiered at our school. And I say premiere because the production was created by one of my colleagues, Mr. Jake. He wrote the story, created the dialogue, and we basically premiered it at our school about a month ago. And doing so, to be quite honest, was one of the most stressful, but also amazing experiences in my musical career. I can say that in all likelihood, most of our students don't have any theater experience. I don't think Mr. Jake had any experience putting on a musical. So in order to coordinate everyone, we needed basically all of our teachers to work in tandem in coordination. Now, with most musicals, from what I've experienced, there's auditions and certain students participate. But at our school, we had almost every student participate in the musical in various ways. Some students danced, other students acted, some students in Ms. Vaughn's class created props, other students promoted the musical, and then I had some students actually perform in a makeshift hit band, playing ukulele, keyboard, and cello. So doing so was, I think, one of the best experiences I've ever had. And I know that we endorse project-based learning at our school, and I'm happy to say that this was the biggest project-based learning thing that we've ever accomplished at Connect. So I'd just like to share that with you. The name of the production was "Space is the Place", and maybe you can check it out sometime. It's on our Parent Square website. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Anton, for sharing about "Space is the Place". Our next speaker is Bianca Carta. Let's see, I think this says Waller Soto Franco. All right.
Good evening to everyone here. My name is Walter, and I'm one of the recent graduated students from last year. I was born in Guatemala. I arrived to the United States three years ago, and thanks to this community. Now, as you can see, I can speak English, not that well as I wish, but I can have conversations with people. I'm here because I really appreciate this community. I really appreciate Ms. Haley. I really appreciate the staff. And when I got here, I used to think that I didn't feel of this community. I thought that I will never speak English in my entire life, but now I'm here. My art teacher, Ms. Vaughn, she's a very nice teacher. I really love her. Ms. Haley is the best person I ever met. The staff is the best one. I really love this school. Now that I'm in high school, I used to come back to this school to visit the people that support me with my art skills, with my language skills, and I'm really thankful to them because thanks to them, I am the person that is speaking just right here to you. Sorry, I'm very nervous. But this community is the best one. And I hope to the day that I decided to have kids, my kids can go to this school, same as me. Thank you.
Thank you, Walter. Thank you for sharing some of your personal experience. We're really glad you're here. And you sell yourself short. You speak English wonderfully, so really, really appreciate you speaking tonight. Let's see, we have, last speaker is Itamar Giron.
Good afternoon. My name is Itamar Giron, and I graduated Connect Community Charity School in 2020 when COVID hit. So my experience with Connect, so I used to go to a school called Fair Oaks, and unfortunately, that school closed down, so my mom decided to enroll me to Connect. This started in third grade. I didn't think a small school would actually impact me as much as Connected because I went, and even Mr. Anton was my teacher. He taught me the melodica and was it the recorder? Honestly, this school is amazing because I, a few weeks ago, reached out to my old teacher because now I am currently enrolled in San Francisco State University. I'm currently studying mechanical engineering and just, I often think back to Connect. I currently have siblings who go, and they still have the thrill I did when I went to Connect. I miss my teacher, so a few weeks ago, I decided to text her just to keep up with it, you know? And something she said is, "Teaching at Connect was such a special experience for me, and I often find myself wondering how everyone is doing. It would mean so much to me to plan a reunion and catch up with the wonderful class of 2020." And for me, thinking back that even the teacher, her name, her name is Kathy Cantella, I miss her so much. I really do want a reunion. And for me, Connect, like, it's just a very small community, but like, it has so much meaning and so many memories were made for me and even my siblings. They come home telling me, "Oh, my God, Mr. Trey. Oh, my God, this happened." I'm like, yes, like, I had that. And it's just... And it's just, it's an it's an incredible experience and. I just gained so much knowledge and it made me just a better person in general. Oh, yeah, I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you, Itamar. Thanks for sharing your experience. Congratulations on your next academic journey at San Francisco and good luck at becoming a mechanical engineer. Um, okay, our last speaker is going to be Ashley Solis.
Hola, buenas noches. Me llamo Ashley Solis Reyes y estoy en octavo grado y estoy en Connect desde tercer grado. Y lo que me gusta de Connect desde pequeño es que me enseñaban a aprender inglés. Y lo que le doy gracias a Connect, que gracias a ellos aprendí muchas cosas. Aprender inglés y otras cosas así. Y también lo que me gusta es la oficina es que nos trata bien. Hello, my name is Ashley Solis and I'm in eighth grade. I have been in Connect since I was in. Third grade, I was like about, I like about Connect since I was a little is that they helped me learn, speak and read in English. And I want to and I want to thank Connect is that I learned many things. And also is that the stuff treat us as well. Sorry, I'm nervous. Thank you.
No, that was great. Very well done. Thank you, Ashley. Very well done. I appreciate it. That's the end of our public speakers and the presentation, so I think I can close the public hearing. And then if the board has any discussion that they want to have, we can go ahead and do that afterwards. Is that right?
Uh, for for tonight, it was closing the public hearing and then moving on to the next.
And then just moving on, no discussion at all. Okay.
There'll be opportunities in February.
Okay, to discuss when it when it actually comes up. And yeah, I think.
No, I wasn't sure if there were questions or not and.
No, we're gonna close close the public hearing.
Okay.
We've heard all the all the comments in your presentation, so thank you, and then we'll move.
Thank you. And I just want to say Anton has worked at this school since it was opened. He forgot to mention that he's a he's a longstanding member. Thank you so much for your time, and I hope you don't have to stay too late. Have a good night.
All right, thank you. Yeah, so we'll close at nine thirteen. Board, do you, does anyone want a five minute break? We still have several action items to get through and reports. I don't think it's going to be. Very long, but I wasn't sure. It's like nine fifteen. I just wanted to check in. Do people want a break? Yeah. Arthur, is everybody else at the Deus kid with coming through? Yeah, okay. So we are moving on to the consent agenda. Can I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
All in favor?
Bye.
All right. Uh, and that was without eight point five, which we had pulled from the agenda. Thanks. Okay. Um, then we're going to move on to our action items. Nine point one, adoption of resolution number fifteen. This is the resolution resolution to apply for zero emission school bus initiative incentive.
Uh, good evening. Uh, as stated, this is for resolution number fifteen to apply for the zero emission school bus initiative. Uh, known as ZSB. Tonight, Martin Cervantes, Director of MNO Transport, Overseas Transportation. Along with Vidal Duran, Vidal Duran, the manager of our transportation services, is here to present the item.
Evening, Dr. Baker, esteemed board members and our new board members. Jenny King, Jennifer King, and David Lee, welcome, welcome to the board and our members of the public. Excuse me, we're here to request approval to proceed the purpose, um, with. Board Resolution fifteen. Sorry, my throat is killing me, which allows to move forward with part B. For the application process for the placement of four large buses specifically for three C and G buses. And one diesel. This would all be through ZSB grant program offered by the state. Currently, our fleet consists of twenty buses, seven of which are fully electric, while the remainder is a mix of gasoline and diesel vehicles. In order to comply with the California, sorry, California's upcoming emissions regulations. We must transition our entire gas and diesel fleet to zero emission vehicles by twenty thirty five. To ensure we meet these requirements, we will actively monitor. Relevant grant opportunities and strategically apply to secure the best possible funding outcomes. Uh, we will bring this matter back to the board with. Approval of part C, once we have approval from part B of the grant. Uh, I've, uh, Vidal, our transportation manager, that will talk a little bit about our fleet.
Yeah, good evening. Um, Marissa, Vidal Duran, Transportation Manager. You know, we've been monitoring different grants in order to fulfill the requirements that. To meet the state deadlines and all that. There were a couple of grants available. And we decided to approve ZSB because it's. The money that will come out of pocket from the district is less than I that all the grant that was available right now. We were pre-approved already for four buses. Uh, there's a. The deadline is in a couple of weeks for a part B. And, you know, once we get approval for part B, then. Part C will. You know, I think hopefully we'll we'll get it, but we need your approval in order to move forward with that.
All right, thank you, Martin and Vidal. Um, I'll look to the trustees if anybody has questions or anything that you want to discuss.
Less about the program, which seems like a great idea. Um, more just the documentation. If I am understanding this, we're being asked as a board to approve the resolution that was posted on on the board document. Is that correct?
Correct.
I think the the only concern that I have is on the last resolution clause, which I think suggests that. The authority would be for approval to enter into the contract without further board. Um, approval, which it doesn't sound like is what is actually being contemplated operationally, but. Uh, it seems like that last one, that last part should be stricken. And go ahead with the process, but I I don't, I'm not comfortable with the idea of us approving something that we haven't seen. So I don't I don't know if there's open discussion on the districts and on how to resolve that.
Does anyone have feedback on the from the. District about, I think you were talking about the B for the resolve that is selected for funding. Yeah.
Yeah, and as we said, we would bring this back. This is moving us forward from part B to part C. Uh, and we've talked internally as well as that before we would take anything. Forward, we would bring it back to the board. Some of the terms and conditions haven't even been released yet. And we'll be for part C, and we bring that before we. Uh, did final submission and issuing purchase orders or any other. Binding agreements. This allows us to move forward to part C.
So I guess my question is, if this resolution minus that last clause were approved, if that last part were stricken. Does that give the district sufficient authority to continue moving through the process? Like, I'm not trying to stop this. I just. Want to make sure that it does through all the documentation allows to actually do the approval.
We probably need to take it back to our attorney to ask and see if it'll be allowed in that fashion.
Okay.
Because it was given to us in this manner, and it went through legal, and this is what legal presented to us on how to move this forward. At this particular time, knowing that they had the information from where we're going in that that direction to get the the grant funding. This is what she put into place.
Are there, I guess, are there time constraints on?
That I don't know. Time constraints on when this, it has to be in next two weeks.
Next two, okay, and we don't have a board meeting until.
We don't have, but the end of January. Has to be, yeah, and the next board meeting is on the sixth, I believe, the fifth.
So the the clause is talking about enter into the binding grant agreement, not into the binding contract to purchase the buses, right?
That's what this is for.
Right, so what would come back to us would be like a proposed contract to actually buy the buses. This isn't giving them authority to go and. Buy the buses. This is giving them authority to enter into the grant agreement.
Right, but we don't know what the terms of the grant agreement are either.
Yeah, we we won't know until until we go through the process, and then we would bring that back to you.
Yeah.
For approval.
Said my piece.
Our county attorney, I mean, I should say it's our attorney that works for us. Yeah, this also works for the school. Yeah, these templates have been used in the past through, it's gone through our legal.
I think I think it's a fair concern, and I I would echo it, and I would say let's send it to legal, but legal sent it to us. So I sort of feel like. That diligence is reasonable to ask for and perhaps has been done, so.
Yeah, I. Raised the concern and we can put it through the votes.
Yeah, does anyone else have anything that they want to discuss about this as that David brought up? I mean, I would say that we, if if no one else objects, we just leave the language as written for the amendment, and then we can decide. Um, as trustees, when we go to vote on the action item, whether or not we can we support it or not as an approval.
If we could also give legal just the feedback that like this felt a little uncomfortable, um, just.
I can do that because she went through the regs, and so from the regs, this is what she moved forward with. And we're not the only district that has the same language either.
I I believe it. I I'm also, I mean, I'm being the annoying lawyer. I I just, I read the text and it's kind of what it is. But I like the approach that that Mike's already proposed.
Yeah. Okay, um, does anyone else have comments or questions that they want to ask? I think. No, I asked a few questions over email. They all, you answered many of them here already. I didn't know about the twenty thirty five time limit to replace the whole fleet for electric buses, so.
Yeah, that's across the state.
Yeah, yeah, so definitely need to be getting ahead of that. Um, so with that in mind, then we're going to leave the resolution as written. Um, is there a motion to approve the resolution?
I'm okay making a motion.
Okay. Is there a second? Okay, um, and we'll do an all in favor. I, all in favor, yeah. Okay, was that everyone that said they're all in favor? And anyone opposed? And no, no one abstained. Okay, so that was everyone. Great, okay, so nine point one, we're done with. We'll move on. Thank you. Thank you, Martin and Vidal. I appreciate it. Next two is the acceptance of the California School Employees Association Chapter Five Sunshine Proposal. This is for this year and next year.
Yes, thank you. We are, this item and the next item all relate to our upcoming negotiations, starting with CSCA on February fourth. And while we have closed salary negotiations for twenty four, twenty five. There are still one more component of health benefits that still needs to be negotiated and was planned. Um, as the cycle opens in January, so the timing is appropriate. And then one other article, and then our continued regular negotiations for next school year. And so. The attachment tonight is CSCA's intent to negotiate these items. Any questions I can answer?
Looks like the regular beginning of the process. Um, so thank you for bringing this to us. Uh, can I get a motion to approve? Is there any discussion, any questions? No, I see none. Uh, any, can I get a motion to approve? I move we approve this. And a second? All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, that's everyone. Uh, then we will move on to the counterpart, nine point three, which is the governing board's receipt of initial proposal for negotiations with the. California School Employees Association, Chapter Five.
Thank you. So similar to CSCA presenting their proposal, this is the district's proposal that is coming to you for approval. Any questions regarding this approval, uh, proposal?
Nope, um, just, you know. Looking forward to, uh, you know, a good collaborative experience, hopefully. So, uh, can we get a motion to approve?
I move we approve.
And a second? Okay, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi, that's everyone. All right, and lastly, we have nine point four, which is approval of personnel changes for the twenty four, twenty five school year.
Thank you. So we have a request from a different department, CNS and facilities. To establish two new positions that would begin after approval, of course, and going through the appropriate process. Uh, to support CNS and facilities. Any questions regarding this request?
I don't have any. Um, does anyone else have a question? Or comments? Anything to discuss? Okay, can I get a motion to approve?
I move we approve.
And a second? And a second, and all in favor?
Hi. Let's deliver that fresh food.
That's our next agenda. That's kind of our announcement time. Um, yes, so then we have Megan O'Reilly Green, who wants to speak, uh, for the board reports. Three minutes, sorry. I don't think your mic is on. Yeah.
Oh, is that?
Perfect, thanks.
It was so quiet in here, I couldn't even tell that my mic wasn't on. Um, thank you guys all so much for all you do as board members and your dedication to, um, you know. The improvement for all students in Redwood City. Really appreciate it. Um, as I was listening to Winnie, I wanted to add a little piece that I noticed that something she went over was the difference in scores. For underserved students from the school year, um, twenty two, twenty three to to last year, twenty three, twenty four, there was a decrease in about eleven percent. For ELA and math for those students. And I think the one thing that she didn't mention was that there was a gap last year in the. Site tutoring program. So before that, we had had Healthy Cities, which was a pretty robust tutoring program that we put in place. And then that program went away because. I don't really know why they went away, but they they said that it wasn't working and they had a spending year trying to figure out how to. Put in something more robust. And so what this community came up with after much discussion is the implement, the. The initiative to implement something with where the teachers are involved using the wind blocks and as well, they're doing an onsite tutoring program, which is very extensive, lots of parent. Um, support tutoring, um, and a pretty comprehensive plan that they're working with the teachers, which is wonderful. Um, so I think that just kind of points to like the power of community to, you know, raise the scores of underserved students, and then the district is not alone in this. Um, a major threat across every presentation tonight was the difference in performance across students with and without resources. And I have a really good strategy for helping the most at risk students. I bet you guys can guess what it is. Um, and I feel that a fixed mindset is kind of limiting the effectiveness of us deploying this powerful tool in the district. So last week, we heard from, um, my daughter about like the life changing, you know, education of MI. And I had put a slide in the slide deck that we presented, and I just want to read to you guys the differences in scores between. Underserved students at particular MI schools and their district counterparts. So at Yumeng Charter. They have a fifty two point six percent increase for underserved students versus underserved students in Alameda County as a whole. Um, at Irvine International School for Mandarin, they have a forty six point five percent increase. Um, relative to their district underserved students. College Park, the figure is twenty eight point five percent. Um, West County Public is twenty six percent. Barnard Public in LA County, um, thirty percent, and John Muir Public is eleven percent. So if you want kids to do well in school in math, if you want them to do good in math, you want underserved kids to do well in math. I would say let's put them in a Mandarin immersion program. So that's my argument.
Yes, sorry, the time, yes, thank you. Thank you for your comments, uh, this evening. Um, and then we're on to our report from board members and superintendent. Um, does anybody want to start? It's only been a week. Uh, so I'm not expecting a time, but does anybody have anything to report?
Standard. Uh, no, we have, just like the board report, we attended the SMC SBA. Program, not just for new trustees, but for trustees across the county. So that was very helpful, uh, just to get a sense of what's going on. Across other districts and the counties and city. I'm happy to share the materials once I've received those.
Anyone else?
No, nothing. Okay, you also attended the.
Okay, you also attended the CTA breakfast, legislative breakfast or whatever. That was nice. Yeah, thank you. We were there with Aaron Washburn and Cindy Meek. The one thing I, they had the CTA president speak, David Goldberg. And he had some interesting things that I thought I'd just share real fast, which was he reminded everybody about Prop thirteen, of course, and asked who's paying nineteen seventy taxes still? It's not really individuals, right? It's the corporations that were around from that time and that's where it is. He mentioned that CTAs will be advocating in 2026 to extend Prop thirty and Prop fifty-five, which is the increased income taxes. And that adds, adds to our Prop ninety-eight. And then he mentioned a bill that the president had just signed and CTA had access, the Social Security Fairness Act, which allows public employees that had been paying into social security to actually be able to get their social security after retirement. So it was interesting, some good information there.
I attended the RCF meeting last night. And so they're preparing for their different types of funding activities that are going to start taking place at the end of February. And also attended the Orion Growth Plan Committee today, which went from three until about four forty-five. So the next step is the committee was divided up into five different groups. And after they have, we reviewed all the data that we have gone over. And now it's time for them to make a recommend, make recommendations to me to review, bring them back to staff to see which ones we can actually move forward with. And then bring a recommendation to the board, probably in April sometime. So it was a really good working group, very good working group. So we'll see what, how we move forward.
You said April is the time when we'll hear from you. All right, let's move on to information. We've received the quarterly Williams report for the second quarter of October twenty-fourth through December twenty-fourth. That's eleven point one. No, no comments, no discussion, perfect. Eleven point two, we already had, so we're at twelve point one correspondence. Correspondence, I can't think of any off the top of my head.
I guess I was, go ahead.
I received correspondence from another classified employee regarding the, oh, my God, I just went blank. The support for the summer program.
Summer Assistance Program? Okay. Any others?
Received an email about energy solutions.
Okay.
It seems like a potential relating to the solar projects that are ongoing in the district. I think all of us received it, but just offering an alternative or something.
I received a email from an incoming TK parent for Orion MI concerned that the PlayThrive After-School program may not have enough classroom space to offer to all of the interested TK students.
All right. Shall we move on to possible other business or suggested items for future agenda? I don't have any tonight. And then the board meeting's calendar, any changes to the calendar? Okay, yes, we've got some changes.
There is a closed session, February fifth, five forty-five to six forty-five. I did send a calendar invite, but just wanted you guys to know as well.
Yeah, no, the calendar invite is super helpful. Because, yeah, that's the easiest way for me to remember.
I'm just, as a reminder, I'm in DC. I'll try and patch in remotely to some parts of that, but.
Got it. Okay, we're on to adjourn the meeting. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
And a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right.
That's good.